But you do get D two.
That's our mountain.
Well, I suppose they go through and they try to put down what was there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Okay, we have a forum, we'll move forward. Uh, there's a couple of items on the agenda. We'll amend the agenda a little bit. Jocelyn Miller will not be here tonight, so we're gonna take her off on the agenda. She's with the Carbon County School District number two. And then, under Town Hall, I would like to add pay scale and raises. And if nobody else sees any other amendments or additions, I'll call for a vote on this with the two amendments.
I'll make the motion to accept these two amendments.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to set the agenda with the two amendments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It will prove, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the March fourth meeting. Uh, is there any corrections or additions that need to be made to vote? Not, do I have a motion to accept a meeting minutes from March fourth, twenty twenty five?
I've been making motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of March fourth of twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move on to approval of the bills. And we have deposits in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars, thirty-three cents. Accounts payable in the amount of one oh three, eight forty-seven and sixty-six cents. Transmittals in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. And payroll in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. Questions? Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, the bills and financial report?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports, bills.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to correspondence.
Uh, Saratoga, Saratoga Flat Valley Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner and Business Awards are this Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, cocktails and appetizers at five thirty, and the meeting starts at six thirty.
Any additional? Okay, we'll move on to items from the public. And we have a special event permit from Joe Elder.
Joe Elder cannot be here tonight. Um, so I'm presenting it in, so on May seventeenth, they wanna do a bluegrass concert on the patio at the PBCC. Um, they don't have any bands confirmed as of yet. They're just kind of getting a head start on all this. Um, and they wanna close the street on Spring Street between Second and Third, right there behind the community center. Uh, no alcohol is gonna be served. It's gonna be a family-friendly event, and it's gonna be from eleven A M. to four P M.
Mr. Chief, do you have a problem closing that street at that time?
What day of week is it?
May seventeenth.
Okay, it isn't clear about this.
What we can do here is if you wanna have a chance to review this, we can table this till the next meeting to vote on it. That way, we'll give the fire department a chance to, uh, take a look at the permit, too.
Just looking at it briefly. On seventeenth, it's a Saturday. I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
Joe said he will be here at the next meeting. If you guys have any questions.
Up to the council how they would. We can table it until the next meeting, and so the chief of police has chance to look at it and
Okay.
and along with the fire department. Do I have a motion to go ahead and table this until the following meeting?
I'll make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's one reason why we asked that they come in early, so these guys have a chance to look at them, so. Anyway, any council comments? Okay, we'll move on to reports from Town Hall. Uh, the first item on there is the Stropus, Stropus property. I'm not sure of the correct saying of that. Uh, we've been contacted by, uh, uh, his Stropus attorney, and he basically asked, you know, why the council was not in favor of selling the property at this time, and that was all explained to him. He did ask if, uh, we would commit to selling the property once he received foot, uh, a quiet title for the property showing that the Stropuses actually owned the property.
The adjacent property.
Pardon?
The adjacent property, the property that was up to it.
Yeah, the property in question. Uh, which is everybody from, you know, there was no owner. They have filed in court for a quiet title on basically the two parcels of land that, uh, seem to be owned by who knows.
Thought it was owned by the county, they figured out.
No, it's actually owned by the brown Casper. And, uh, they, according to what I've been told by their attorney, they have been unsuccessful in trying to locate these people. They've it's, uh, their last known addresses were Casper and Anaheim, California. And they've checked birth, birth records, deceased records, what's and that is where they're at right now. So he has filed for a quiet title through the court system. And that's where they're at. Uh, Saratoga was not mentioned in the lawsuit because he was under the impression that, uh, we would sell the property. So basically, he's asking if we would commit to selling the Stropus, the property, once this matter is cleared up in court, and they own the adjacent property to ours. So it's strictly, I told him that, uh, Mike and I had the phone call with him. Uh, and so it's strictly up to the council.
I don't have a problem once they own it.
Goodness. Yeah. Any other discuss? I'll, I'll take a motion.
I would make a motion to sell them the property after they prove that they own the adjacent property to it, the property in question.
Okay. So I have a motion on the table uh, to, that the town will sell their portion of property at the Saratoga Lake to the Stropus, Stropus once they have received a quiet title for the adjacent property. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I just wanna add one thing. If this is not cleared up within a year, well, by the time some of us go out on our next term, this is not binding. We cannot bind the other council to sell it to them. So I just want that to be noted, that we are aware of that.
Good.
So with that being said, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the second item, and it's gotta list it as pay scale. What we did is a year ago, we adopted a pay scale in which, uh, to try to pick her, but we had at that time, it has grown, so uh, with the help of Karina and Emery, we put together another pay scale. Will include raises. And, uh, in the new pay scale, in the old one, we had G S one through a G S ten, and in the new one, we have one through a G S one through a G S seventeen. And if you notice, on the pay scale, some of these are reserved. And we, we left it that way. So the next time if one of these do arise, uh, we don't have to do a bunch of changing, we just have areas to cover where we was giving people raises. And, uh, they all are listed with steps. And, uh, so this is presented to the council tonight. For a vote. We also have positive raises, and what we've done is, through the research we did, uh, and, uh, findings that we come up with, we are still behind the curve. Uh, so we need to give our people a raise if, for one thing, they deserve it, uh, just so they can live. But another thing is that we wanna retain them here. And this'll be a start to that. And, uh, as you look at this with the raises, this'll be for this year. This is not subject to change until the following year. And that's when we would consider, uh, possibly a cost-of-living raise and maybe a step move for each employee, uh, depending on their experience, what they've done, if they've taken on more, but this was de-set. Uh, so when we go into budgets, uh, a raise will already be done. Uh, and what we've done is, uh, we've come up with the steps where we think people should be, and their G S rating, and I will go through those. Uh, Brenda now would mess up your last name. Brenda will be moved from a G S four up to a G S four, step six. Karina will move to a G S seven, step seven. Jennifer Anderson will be moved to a G S seven, step two. Emery Penner will be moved to a G S fifteen, step seven. Eugene Stubbs will be moved to a G S seven, step two. Uh, Wim Paddock will be moved from a G S up to a G S two, step two. Christopher Powell will be moved to a G S three, step two. Ryan Brilkill will be moved to a G S three, step one. Jason Sharp will be moved to a G S two, step one. Chuck McVay will be moved to a G S seven, step nine. Uh, Brandon will be moved to a G S four, step seven. John Moore will be moved to a G S thirteen, step four. Mike Morris will be moved to a G S nine, step four. Ken Lear will be moved to a G S seven, step eight. And Mac Holt will be moved to a G S six, step four. Casey Lear will be moved to a G S six, step four. Alex Munson to a G S five, step one. Jennifer German will be moved to a G S four, step five. Stephen Fletcher will be moved to a G S two, step two. Grace Moore will be moved to a G S two, step two. Carter Edwards will be moved to a G S five, step six. And Kelsey Hatun will be moved to a G S two, step two. Are there any questions? Concerns? Uh, we have gone over, I have gone over it with, uh, Karina. Uh, budget will withstand it. The budget, we set enough money aside this year to, uh, it will, it will accept the raises, and I'd like to make this effective. If council feels in favor of it, uh, to go into effect, the next new pay period, which will be on March twenty-fourth, will be the start of the new pay period.
I'd make the motion to adopt these changes in the pay scale.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, most in period. What we'll do is, uh, department heads will be given what the raises are, so you can pass it on to your employees. Oh, and, uh, I wanna thank the council for this because it was a long time coming, and it was well needed. You know, when we have employees that are full-time employees making thirty-seven thousand dollars a year and some change, it's just not enough to survive and, and make them wanna stay. But now we have a couple of good things in place. I think our employees will be much happier, and and we'll just move forward from here. Okay.
What are you gonna do with part-time?
Oh, aren't the part-time, um, when you go through that, do on the part-time employees, you'll look at it, uh, cashiers at the pool will be making thirteen dollars an hour. Lifeguards, one will be making fifteen, a lifeguard two is sixteen. A head lifeguard will be making seventeen fifty. Uh, janitorial services will be at eighteen fifty. Season, uh, weed and pest employees, along with dispatchers and a rec assistant, will be at twenty-one. A pool manager will be at twenty-two dollars. Part-time police officer will be at twenty-seven fifty. Our clerk of court, who is Marie Christensen, will be bumped to twenty-eight dollars an hour. And the building official, which is Andrew Myers, who works maybe four hours a month, will be moved up to fifty dollars an hour. He's a contract service.
So, those are the fabric now. I mean, that's where it's at. He's not changing, that's just where he's at.
Yeah, that's where he's at. There any questions about that? Do I have a motion to go ahead and accept these wages for the part-time employees, as read?
I'll make a motion to accept it, as read.
Uh, and a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That, I love this one, that. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. I appreciate that. I mean, a lot of pain, means a lot of advice. Yeah, thank you.
You're worth the most, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, we do.
And I just wanna say, we appreciate all the town employees. This is well deserved. Uh, again, like I say, it was a long time coming, but it's a while to get everything in order. And where we knew where we stood financially, and we know where we stand financially. Our revenues will withstand this coming in, even, even if we take a property tax hit, which we know we're gonna our revenues were still looking really good, so. Uh, again, I wanna thank all the town employees, the ones that aren't here and the ones that are here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. We'll move on to the police department. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council. Um, I thank you everyone for approving the raises for everybody. Uh, this past two weeks, police department, we've had a hundred and forty-eight log calls. Um, of course, we had the twenty-two hour power outage last weekend, which kept us a little bit busy down here. We ended up with a command center in the police department, which consisted of Lieutenant Morris, myself, uh, Lenny Lehman, the county emergency manager. Uh, Shannon Fagan was up from encampment for that side. We had the schwims director here, um, and a couple other folks, and we're here, oh, pretty much from six P M. until almost one the next afternoon, when the power was back on and everything was good, just to deal with any medical problems. We stood up the C four call center, set out the emergency alert. I'm sure pretty much everybody in this room got that. So anyone with any medical issues could call in if they, so we could plan for oxygen running out or any other medical device batteries running out. Um, luckily, we got through without any issues. We did find some issues, though, in Town Hall and on the P D side, especially that the generator is not running some things that we needed to. So I do have, um, an electrician will be coming down. He said either tomorrow or the next day, and we're gonna go through some stuff and work up some quotes for getting some pre-wiring done for the generator, plus just some other things I need to get rewired for the battery backups on the nine-one-one system and such. Um, what else we have? It, we had an extra officer on that night, just because there was no power. I had two officers out patrolling. Ended up being pretty, pretty quiet. We had a disturbance at the resort, and then someone called in possible glass breaking at the resort, but no one could find anything. And that was really all we had come on, come up. Um, surprisingly, the hot pools were extremely busy until about three o'clock in the morning. But no incidents came out of that at all. But we did, actually, Sunday night, have an incident at the hot, hot pool. Um, a couple from Mills was actually cited for, um, violation of the city ordinance for sexual intrusion at the hot pool. Um, so they'll have court coming up.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's just our regular run-of-the-mill type shot.
So your incident at the nine-one-one system, and by going with the sheriff's office, we'll still have to keep that up and running, correct?
We'll still have it set up as a backup, but it'll be, um, like during the power outage, we did have a couple incidents with nine-one-one system. The power bumps did end up frying one of our boards in it. So it's actually runs on a redundant system. We have two phone lines that ring in. We lost one of those lines. Uh, converged one, sent down their tech from River Canyon, drove down at one o'clock in the morning, had it completely repaired, backup going by a little before six. And then he got back home, and when the power came back on, all those bumps we had, took it out again, but it was able to, I was able to restart it, and he's able to remote in and get everything fixed. But when that went down, um, Lumen is the company that's constantly monitoring that system. They automatically rolled it over from us to the sheriff's office. And that's what'll happen with our system. If the sheriff's office takes over, instead of ringing here, it'll just ring straight up there.
Good.
All right, now my actual agenda items. I'm gonna do twelve and thirteen together, because they're actually basically one unit. Um, what the two invoices are, they're Motorola invoices. One invoice was for the purchase of the equipment, which is two consulates, which will be for, um, one here at the station, the other one goes up the radio tower. And this'll be for, um, fixing our communications and getting rid of the copper pairs between the radio tower in here. It's been an incident, gosh, two years ago now, where a bus ran into that phone pedestal up there on Sierra, and we lost all radios. We had no redundancy or backup to replace the copper pairs at the time. And then the other portion of that, the two thousand five hundred and thirty-six, is the um, software programming in those consulates before Motorola sent them to us. These are actually all funded already through the S H S P grant. So these are just invoices we have to pay, and then we reimburse through that grant, which we have the forty-seven thousand and some change on that grant. And these were purchased under that. This was approved before Chief Morris went out back in June or July, because when the initial purchases approved.
Are we still gonna need this?
Yes, because
Go with the sheriff's office?
Yes, because this actually is gonna be, there's more equipment coming, which is a microwave, which will be down here and then also up there. And I am told, I haven't confirmed yet through contact, that these are supposed to be, um, capable also, where the sheriff's office will actually be able to just basically talk over the internet to them and then talk to us off the water tower like we do normally now.
Okay.
And then there'll be a microwave backup between the county and the tower with the microwave system also.
Okay, and then as an additional backup, will this will still remain up?
Correct.
If something?
Yeah, everything's still gonna be kept in service down here, and there'll still be some upgrades that we're gonna have to do eventually in the future, but yes.
Yeah.
All of our equipment's gonna be maintained here and operational.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go ahead and pay these two invoices? Uh, with the, off of a grant to reimburse, one of them's for two thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fourteen cents. The other one's for seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'd make the motion to go ahead and pay these invoices, both of them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you. Next item I have, number fourteen, is for a U-line order, which is, um, this past week, Lieutenant Morris and I have been doing some remodeling and cleaning over in the police department. Um, we've added some, a big screen T V, slightly smaller big screen T V. When I was a kid, it was a really big screen T V. Now that it's not so little big, it's one of them sixty-five, the other one's forty-three, so. Oh, for creating what used to be the squad room, which is the main entryway into um, the P D, the main big room you go into, we're turning that more into a training room. And setting it up to where it can be more practical as a command center for when things come up and for use during Saratoga days. And so what this order is for, it's gonna be, um, four sixty-inch by twenty-four-inch training tables. They're two hundred and thirty-five dollars each. Um, which will seat eight at those tables, so then there's, uh, eight chairs at eighty-five dollars each. A new six-foot by four-foot cork board, pegboard, and then a six-foot by four-foot, uh, dry erase board. Those both go on the south wall in the room. And it comes to a total of two thousand five dollars even.
What, uh, you don't have enough chairs to ramp one?
Um, or we don't. What we have over there now is kinda made up of, we got a couple of, like, the chairs from in here and a couple other random blue ones. And it's just old office chairs. We have two of the old council chairs, and just other office chairs that have been around fifteen years or so.
Okay. Well, your budget would stand it.
It will.
Out of training?
Uh, actually, I was gonna do this stuff out of capital equipment.
Questions? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this, uh, order for the chairs and tables and boards and erase board and?
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve, uh, this equipment purchase from the P D. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All I have tonight. If you have any questions or concerns you need. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, John. Okay, we'll move on to the fire department. I have not been able, or I have not talked to anybody from the fire department, but nobody's here tonight, so I don't think they have anything to report. I will report that the twenty-sixth, the twenty-sixth of this month, at the community center, we will be having as far, a meeting, a workshop meeting with the fire district. Uh, it's been, I've been told that there's some people from other towns gonna have been asked to, to come, but have been asked to come, but I want everybody to know this. This is our meeting. This is between the town of Saratoga and the fire district. And but, you know, people will be given a chance to talk. That's all I have on the fire department. We'll move on to the recreation department.
Gentlemen. Want to reiterate what these guys said. Thank you for that kind gesture. Here tonight, I just have a couple meaningful staff to hire potentially. The first one would be Shelby Condon as a cashier. Second one would be Colt Sharp as a cashier. And so David Sharp as
These guys are related?
They are. They are related.
No way that okay, I'm just thinking nepotism there. There's no way that he'll be over her or she'll be over him.
No, no, they would have
They'll probably have to work opposite shifts.
That can totally be worked out.
Okay. But I don't have a problem with it.
And they'll be at the new rates.
Yes.
Yes. I couldn't tell you what those are.
Does he have his lifeguard certification and everything?
No, so we have him and currently two others need to go out for certification. I did speak with Nina and Rollins today. We're shooting for the end of April.
Kelsey was doing that?
Yeah, well, it was originally gonna be the end of April, then it became the end of May, and then I called Nina today and said, hey, if I get you enough, can we get them all certified?
How much?
How many total?
Yeah, how much total?
How many are we sending to get certified total? Currently three, hoping to add at least one more.
Okay.
That'll put us at, I think nine lifeguards, ten including Kelsey and two cashiers.
Okay. I would, you know, I'd be careful on how I had her because she's kind of in charge of everything.
Right.
So she'll only break or something like that.
No, she's in agreement with it. She was wanting the same amount of lifeguards.
Okay.
The more
No, but what I'm saying is to use, to count her on her as a, to shift her as a lifeguard.
No, she's got herself set up just to be like a rotation when there's a need for it. She won't be out there actually lifeguarding on them.
I don't want to get into that.
No, just mostly when rotation comes.
Okay. How many do you think you need to run this place?
I'd say probably eight to ten.
Okay.
Would think would be best because it's still summertime. Kids got vacations.
Okay.
Things to attend.
Any other question? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve these new hires for Carter?
I'll make a motion to hire these people.
Okay. And do I have a second? Awesome. Any discussion? Okay. Would you make sure that, would you read their names again, please?
Shelby Condon, Colt Sharp, and David Sharp.
Thank you.
David Sharp lifeguards?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good for me. I have any questions?
No, other than that, how's it going over there?
Good. K three five basketball. Team started yesterday. It's busy. It's busy there.
Does everybody seem to like how you split everybody up?
As far as I can tell, yeah.
That was one of their big concerns that I got beat up with?
Yeah.
Regular?
Yeah, this year they were just split kindergarten and first graders play each other, second and third grade play each other, fourth and fifth.
Okay, no skills assessment.
No.
Okay. All right, well, thanks, Carter.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Department of Public Works, Mr. Emery.
Starting off, just go right into that item sixteen. So as part of our program this year, we wanted to switch up the weed and feed we're using and use another pre-emergent and then also overseed. That's part of our contract with the maintenance group is to have them do both of these applications. So we looked around and trying to get a grass blend supposed to grow up here for a little higher, drier climate. And we've got, found this co-op that has a blend that should work up here well. And then a pre-emergent, and this is a three hundred and sixty pounds of grass seed and then forty-two, thirty-pound bags of the pre-emergent, weed and feed. So it's enough to do at their recommended rate for overseeding. It's enough to do about eleven and a half acres. The same with the fertilizer. It'll do everything that we've got on that contract. They can, it's all sold in bulk, so we get a little bit better of a deal on it and then they can saran wrap everything up, fork it onto our flatbed and we
Questions? Do I have a motion to go ahead and purchase this grass seed from Tudor Valley Co-op?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make the motion to
We have a motion on the table to go ahead and purchase this grass seed in the amount of three thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, the next meeting, the gal from the Brownsville Grant Program will be here at the April meeting and she's got a little presentation that she was gonna go over with us. I did have a meeting with her kind of prior prior to that and she, I think she's got some good tools for us to provide some good information at pretty little to no cost to us. So I think that'll, that'll be an interesting meeting for us and then I'll get the presentation prior and I'll have printed out copies for you guys also. But she'll be here next meeting, weather permitting. If it does this, she probably and then, so we also had a meeting with a guy from Wild Signs, one of the main characters over there who, and that's the same company that did Rollins's signs that they have in their community. So working with the planning commission to kind of come up with a wayfinding plan and they're gonna do some designs for us and kind of give us things to look at. And that goes for town entrance signs, wayfinding signs for, you know, hobo pool, you know, pedestrian signs, a kind of a whole package of what that would look like. And give us a few options to look at and then we try to, I think there's some money out there for the visitors council we could go after to make those additions. But that guy was super helpful, the guy from Wild Signs, like he had
Who was it? Nina?
Yes, yes. How do you know him?
Rodeo.
Oh, okay. No, they've done, I mean, like the list of communities that they've done signs for was pretty vast, Green River, Buffalo, Thorpe, West Smith, you'd see Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Cool.
We'll get those over once they, once they get them kind of designed up. He said the gateway sign will take a little bit of time to get those designed up, but that was very helpful to have a design team and the sign people all in one spot and not have trying to outsource and get things worked up. As far as the wayfinding signs go, they're like rectangular signs are like forty percent cheaper. So those were kind of the designs that we I don't I'm working on the airport lift station. We're probably about forty percent of the way with that. We'll have the vault in hopefully by the end of the week. And we're already under the approach. We've got a bunch of all the pipets in the grounds pressure tested. We're pressure testing as we go. And then leaving all the joints, the long joints open. That way we get the whole run done. We can pressure test the whole thing and make sure we're all all coaesthetic there, but that's going pretty well. It's nice not to have any groundwater. We're working on getting a permit in the D Q for this Elm Street, you know, trying to do a block this summer over there. So that way if we do any improvements, you know, from school to school, the water line adjacent to the school is replaced. It's not we don't have to go dig up anything or work next to that.
How are you planning on funding that one?
We'll just buy the pipe and do it ourselves. It shouldn't be, it's just one block. It shouldn't be too much money.
Okay.
The valves will probably cost more than the pipe, but and there isn't a ton in the way to work with right there in the road. We got some water services to go over, a couple storm drains, but there's not a bunch of fiber or anything in. So soon as school's out, hopefully we'll start working on that and get that button up. And then like I mentioned, the top grant, whether, letter of interest into them into the state here probably in the next couple of weeks and then continue through that process. I'll get you guys, we got pretty finalized drawings. I'll get you guys some drawings so you can kind of see what we're looking at and then we can talk about it. If there's any changes we want to make, we don't, we don't have to have the design like finalized right now, but having it at seventy percentage when we turn that up, that letter of interest thing goes a long ways.
You're not looking at doing that this year, are you?
No, but the way the grant funding window works with that, we won't construct that till twenty twenty-six. It basically takes all year to get all the paperwork done and everything and you gotta get your application done and then the construction and the actual grant contract would come in January next year. So it actually works out pretty well. That gives us time to get Elm Street knocked out and done. Does any public works questions?
Yeah. Sounds like you got a handle on them.
Funding commission then? So we had two variance public hearings at the last meeting. One for the setback on a front yard and then one for basically just a kind of almost a code, I don't want to call it code issue, but there's rear yard and rear half, I think were being used interchangeably and it was kind of causing a little bit of an interpretation issue. And that's kind of talking to Kylie. That's what they route they suggested is moving forward with that. If it was ninety percent of the other lots in town, we wouldn't even have to do it. So here at their next meeting, they'll make recommendations on those two applications and then they'll get sent to you and you guys make the final determination on them. Then we talked about the signs as well, so and they, that led to that meeting. We're working that Title eighteen now. That'll probably, it's gonna take some time. Yeah, of course. You covered the good thing. Any other questions?
Do you want to go ahead and, we can pass this ordinance on the first reading if the council doesn't have any questions on it. I'd like to open it up for discussion on Title seventeen. At least, is there any questions?
No, I have none.
You want to go ahead and pass it on as first reading?
Hey, that's your baby's pledge.
Let's go ahead. Would you please read it by title, Emery, and I'll call for a vote, are? There you go.
Town of Saratoga Ordinance twenty-five eight eighty, an ordinance to amend the Town of Saratoga Town Code Title seventeen subdivisions. An ordinance amending and clarifying the process of subdividing land or altering existing subdivisions within the municipal boundaries of the Town of Saratoga. As well as the requirements and processes for the construction of public improvements of said subdivisions and to provide an effective date.
Questions? Chair would entertain a motion to go ahead and pass ordinance number eight eighty Title seventeen subdivisions on its first reading.
I'll make the motion as ordinance eight eighty Title seventeen on first reading.
Do I have a second to Corey's motion?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Emery.
Water and Sewers Joint Powers Board. We did have a discussion kind of about the water tank. There is some on the ballot for the special purpose tax funding. It was rehabilitate slash replace the water tank. So that could give us an option to to look at getting a newer, an additional water tank sooner rather than later. The discussion for concrete and metal was kind of a topic of debate at the meeting. We're gonna run some cost analysis and see which long-term, you know, makes the most sense. It's pretty divided, I would say, right?
That would be we, if we receive all our special purpose tax money, this go around for a new one?
Yeah, there's, there's funding in there. It was either to rehabilitate or replace the old one and it wasn't rehabilitatable, so.
There's plenty of money in what we have now. Set us, or that's come and due.
That's come and due. Yeah, we, this is, we're talking, starting to talk now, probably a few years down the road before we'd actually pulled the trigger. And I think there's ways to capitalize, you know, to try and find some additional funding to you know, like we did with these other projects. And I talked about their bylaws a little bit more, but those were kind of the two main topics. The West Bench project, we did talk about that a little bit. We just got a few lines to camera up there just to verify. We were able to find some old asbills. We weren't sure whether some lines were plastic or not and we did find out that they were plastic instead of clay. So we're gonna camera them. And if they're in good shape, we'll probably you know, pull those two sections off, but we want to camera them before they're before we just yank them. And in the future, even if they're plastic, if they're not you know, say they're a mediocre shape and the grade is good and there's not a bunch of stuff built up in them, they're probably good. One of them goes underneath the ditch. They're probably good C I P candidates pull a liner through them or something. Steve Levy eight having to dig around the ditch and whatnot, but our camera was broken. Now it's fixed, so we'll, we'll get those checked out. We'll go from there and probably early this next month, hopefully get a project manual together, get you guys something to look at and we can get you out and see what happens. Questions, queries?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Emery.
We'll move on to the Recreation Commission, Bob.
Nothing near to report. The next meeting is April seventh at six o'clock here at Council Chambers.
We do have one item under that and it's an ordinance eighty-eighty-one. It's a change. They're moving from five, a five-member, seven-member board to a five-member board. And I would like to go ahead and read this ordinance eighty-eighty-one and pass it on as first reading. Jim, would you please?
Ordinance eighty-eighty-one, a revision of ordinance number two point two four point zero two zero and ordinance from the Town of Saratoga, Carbon County, Wyoming, revising chapter two point two four point zero two zero of the Town of Saratoga Municipal Code regulating the composition of the Recreation Commission.
Any questions? Chair would entertain a motion to pass ordinance number eight eighty-one on its first reading.
I'd make the motion to pass ordinance eight eighty-one on its first reading.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Saratoga Airport Advisory Board.
Um, Chief Morris was there at the meeting. We talked to Larry, that's the head of the F D O there about some emergency stuff that they needed. They needed to get on the field there. And the cash problem, it's getting the whole stuff, but they they worked that out. And they were gonna have a meeting to get some motivation. Is that right? Um, Lockner engineers talked about how it is uncertain about new brands, but the master plan and so far should be safe. There was a landscape we're gonna go out there and check out. The entrance on the eleventh. And they're gonna be taking bids. They were talking about getting a landscape architect. They're still talking about that. Um, and Lockner engineers said master plan forecast for the airport was approved by the F A A. And landing fees for February were two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and Larry said that is close to the average. For words. Sorry.
You're fine.
It's going around.
And that was it.
Do you have anything to add, DeRon?
It's a pretty big deal that the F A A approved the master plan. The all work those engineers did was pretty extraordinary. They didn't pass it. We got any questions? So we did have the right thing to carry that first place.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy, so. It's a good deal. Any questions or any other items for the Saratoga Airport Board? Okay, we'll move on to the South Central Emergency Medical Services. And they don't have anything to add. Their next meeting will be uh, April twenty-first, twenty Uh, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, six P M. At the Riverside Town Hall. For any new business to be brought before this council. If not, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.